The meeting is now open and the live stream is on.
Thank you. That alarm tells me that it's 5:30. Good evening, Azusa Community students, staff, parents. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting today, which is February 25th, 2025. I would like to call the meeting to order today at 5:30. Moving on to item 1.2, roll call. We have Vice President Benavides.
Here.
Board Clerk Rodriguez Peña.
Present.
Board Member Greer.
Here.
Board Member Ramos.
Here.
And I myself, I'm present as well. Moving on to item 1.3, approval of agenda. Can I please have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
For first by Board Member Rodriguez Peña, can I please get a second?
Second motion.
We have a second by Board Member Ramos. Discussion, I see none. Colleagues, please place your votes.
I don't know the screen.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a hand vote right now. Board Member Greer?
Yes.
Board Member Benavides?
Yes.
Board Member Rodriguez Peña?
Yes.
Board Member Ramos?
Yes.
And I myself, yes, it passes 5-0. The following are the guidelines for public comment. The 2.1 item on the agenda. If you wish to participate in public comment, please make note of the following. The Board of Education encourages public input. Board members are not permitted to respond. And a member staff will contact if any information is needed. Now moving on to item 1.4, Pledge of Allegiance. We have today Azusa High School Principal. And you're already at the podium. Could you please introduce our student?
Yes ma'am. Good evening, Board President Arianez, Board members, Cabinet and community. My name is Gabriel Fernandez. I am the proud principal of our Azusa High Aztecs. I would like to share a few highlights from Azusa High. Azusa High School is a hub of academic excellence, creativity and community engagement. Through its early college program, which is in partnership with Citrus College, students have the unique opportunity to earn college credits while still at a high school. Both the four-year cohort and a two-year program serve over 250 students this year in all grade levels. Azusa High School offers diverse career pathways from our graphics arts and computer science to the distinguished medical academy and a nationally recognized engineering program. Students also thrive in visual and performing arts with award-winning artists and exceptional programs in jazz band, marching band, orchestra, piano, guitar and choir. Beyond academics, Azusa High fosters a strong student-centered culture. The Student Union, in collaboration with Link Crew, leads initiatives such as student-led community circles at AHS. And its mentorship programs impact elementary schools as well as Gladstone Middle School. Athletics at Azusa High are just as dynamic with competitive teams every season. Newer sports like boys volleyball, flag football and stunt cheer continue to expand opportunities for our student athletes. Competing in the Montview League, Aztecs take pride in their teamwork and sportsmanship. With a commitment to academic achievement, artistic expression, leadership and athletics, Azusa High is shaping well-rounded students ready to excel in college, career and beyond. I would now like to introduce Cadet Colonel Philip Villa from our JR OTC program, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight.
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Philip, please don't leave yet. We're going to present something to you. So what I was going to say is that today Azusa Unified School District would like to recognize you and proudly presents you this certificate for leading the Pledge of Allegiance today in our school boardroom. Could my colleagues please join myself and our student in the middle, please? Great, now we're moving on to item 2.1, Public Comment. Lika, do we have any blue cards? I'm sorry, Lika, do we have anybody online on Zoom?
We have no hands raised on Zoom.
Oh, do we have any blue cards? Right. Moving on to item 3.1, Presentation of the 2024-2025 Local Control and Accountability Plan, the LCAP. January update. Ms. Garcia Medina, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Arianez, Board members, Cabinet and audience. My name is Adriana Garcia Medina, Director of Educational Services here in Azusa. And I'm excited to share with you the district's progress towards our local control and accountability plan, which is also known as the LCAP during tonight's study session. This is the first of our three-year LCAP plan, which runs through 2027. In this plan, we report on the district's goals, how these goals will be measured, how much funding is tied to each of the goals, what specific actions and services are supporting progress towards these goals. This year, the Ed Services Team of Directors, which is here with us tonight, is excited to share with you the mid-year LCAP update in a collaborative approach. We will be taking on a hands-on approach using an interactive protocol. We anticipate that this protocol will allow the board to take a deeper dive into each of the goals and work with the Ed Services Directors to identify areas of progress and potentially areas of need. Additionally, there will be a rotation, which is the Governor's Budget Rotation with Ms. Latasha Jamal. As you can see, we've set up tables for each of the goals, so we will have six rotations tonight. And using this protocol, we hope to be able to highlight for you the academic success drivers that drive our instructional practices in our classrooms here at Azusa. Cognitive rigor, academic discourse and collaborative practices. First to highlight cognitive rigor in our study session, you'll have the opportunity to analyze data from the mid-year report independently. And you'll be able to synthesize this data in the mid-year report as students have that opportunity to do in their classrooms when teachers aim to shift that cognitive load to the students. So you'll be taking their role today. Second, to highlight academic discourse and collaborative practices, you'll have the opportunity to collaborate with our educational services directors based on focus questions that we have for you today. At each of the stations, you were going to have some resources that you'll be looking at. First, you'll have the mid-year report, which is a bound copy of the entire mid-year report that has all goals included. And it's divided into sections and each of the sections matches one of the tables. Secondly, you will have a section that is specifically assigned to the table. So for example, Table 1 will have Section 1, which corresponds to Goal 1. Table 2 will have Section 2, which is Goal 2 and so forth. So when you get to that table, that's what you will be looking at. We like to give our students multiple resources. So we also have included for you the 24-25 LCAP overview, which gives you an overview of all our LCAP goals with various graphics and tables. And it's more condensed version for parents and students to take a look at. So this is something that we have included for you as well. And then we're also going to have for you an LCAP note catcher, which might look familiar. This is for you to take notes on, to annotate, to refer to some of the questions and possibly jot down some of the answers that you may come across. And this is going to guide you in the conversation with the Ed Services Directors. Okay? Each board member will be assigned to one of the five goals. We will have 20-minute sessions at each of the stations. So the first 10 minutes, we're going to ask that you have some quiet time to dig into the section of the report. So if you're at Goal 1, you'll take the first 10 minutes to look through it. You're going to see what stands out. Are there any patterns? Are there any trends? Have we made progress? What can we continue to do to build on that progress? And potentially, are there any areas of opportunity that we need to continue to investigate and refine our practices with? The second 10 minutes, you'll be able to have a collaborative conversation with one of our directors. And you'll be able to ask questions, to clarify, make some comments, work collaboratively, maybe on some of the responses to these questions. And then we'll continue through that process with each of the stations. Okay? At the end of the rotations, you're going to be asked to share out one area of progress and a potential way to support that area of progress for continued growth and an area of need and potentially something to support that area of need. And the trick of it is you'll be reporting from the first station that you are assigned to. Okay? In other words, it's going to be a glow and a grow from the first goal that you're assigned. Okay? And I'm sure you're super excited and you want to find out what table you're starting at, what goal you're going to dig into. So I'm going to ask Director Sanchez to help me with that. And he has created a randomizer because we want to make sure that this is all by chance. And he's going to go ahead and spin it. And Goal 1.
Does Adrian get two again?
Oh. Okay. You get Goal Number 1. Okay, so you'll start with Goal Number 1. And Goal Number 2 will go to? Mr. Ramos, congratulations, Goal 2. And Goal 3? President Arianez? And next goal? Goal 4? Mr. Greer? And Goal 5? Process of elimination. We wanted to make sure that you. We also wanted to make sure that you get Confetti 2. There it is. All right, so I'm going to ask directors to go ahead and head over to your assigned table and board members as well.
Yes, yes, 10 minutes to.
I'll start, but I'll work on this right now.
Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station. If you're in goal one, you are gonna head over to goal two. If you're in goal two, you're heading over to goal three. If you're in goal three, you're headed to four. And four is coming all the way to the governor's budget. Yes, take your clipboard with you. Yes. We're gonna give five a break, so you're gonna head over to the governor's budget table. Oh. Three went to one? Okay.
So five was over there.
I was gonna send him over this way.
So no, but she just, he was at four, so he went to five. Two, two, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five.
How about you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a break. All right, your 10 minutes of quiet time. Okay, your 10 minutes of quiet time to start looking at your packet for your section begins now. Okay, you should be gathering your resources so we can transfer to the next station.
You may start packing up. That's gonna conclude round two. Please gather your items. Finish your last thought and head on over to the next station. Okay, well, board member Greer is gonna be going over to station six with Ms. Jamal. Board member. Board Member Benavides, station one. Board Member Benavides, station one. Okay, your ten minutes of reading begins now.
...
That's it.
All right, that brings this session to an end. Please finish up your thought. You can thank your partners if you like and please gather your items and head to your next station. Board Member Greer, you're going over to number one, table one. Board President Arianas, you are over in six with Ms. Jamal. Budget, Ms. Jamal. It's great. It's nice to see how the clipboards are great to hold anything, anything but a backpack. There you go. Nothing but a cup. All right. Your first 10-minute time period begins now.
President Arianas, you're gonna come over to table one. Board member Ramos, you're gonna go from five to six with Ms. Jamal. Okay, your ten minutes of reading is going to go ahead and begin now.
Okay.
Okay.
We have about a minute. There's a minute to win it, finish up your last thoughts. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our last round. We can go ahead and you can get back to your original stations. And I will turn this back over to Director Garcia Medina.
Alright, everyone, thank you so much for partaking in some great conversation. Some good questions and some good highlights, so I wanna give the opportunity to the board to report back to everyone based on your first goal assignment. So try to find your notes from the first table that you went to.
I just wanted to ask my colleagues, do you guys need a few minutes to? I think we need a few minutes, we're like on information overload right now. And what I'm getting from the consensus here, majority. Yeah, two of them, so if you could give us about two minutes, two minutes is good. Two minutes is good, or? Let's see, it's seven fifty-two, how about seven fifty-five? Seven fifty-five, let's do seven. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, so just a couple of minutes to review your notes. That is a two-minute time, hopefully that was enough time for everyone. I'm seeing some nodding. So just a reminder, all we're gonna do is share a glow and a grow from your first goal that you went to, so the first table. So we'll go ahead and start with goal one.
So that's me, right?
Correct.
So, goal one is Azuza High School District will ensure growth and achievement for all students on California state standards. So we have a positive on we have many students that have been reclassified. And that's a positive. And also improvements of the reading and math for the English language learners. And what we need to I'm sorry, that was, we need to improve on the English language learners test scores. Because we, I've noticed that, you know, from the past, they were also still need improvement, and I do see other schools that have higher scores. And the question is, you know, what are they doing different? Does a certain school have more EL students and do they need more support? You know, with the funding, do we need to shuffle more of our budget that way so that we can help these students? And because it's really important that, you know, when they're reading, the reading is started at third grade. If they do not read and learn to read or learn what they're reading, it's gonna be hard for them going all through school moving forward. So that's all I have to add, and also, the budget workshop was great.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez Pena. And we'll move on to goal two, Mr. Ramos.
Yes, goal two, first of all, I wanna thank all of you for this session together, it was very informational for me, it being the new, the new cap on the block, so to speak. So thank you for the effort and the time together, the cabinet superintendent and the directors that participated. For my response to the glow and grow, it's gonna sound similar to my previous, my colleague, although it is a little bit different. My goal number two is Azuza High School District will meet the diverse needs of English learner students and accelerate the academic achievement and English proficiency through an assets-oriented, culturally responsive approach. So the highlight for me or the glow was for those students that reclassify from the English learners into what I would refer to as the streamlined students, there was, there's a high percentage of proficiency. And when it comes to meeting or exceeding the standards in the ELA, there's a lot of letters there, C-A-A-S-P-P slash S-B-A-C standard. So in all the different schools, the percentage of the students that met or exceeded these standards was, was high, averaging more than fifty percent, so that was a glow for me. And I think that all the efforts that are being put into making that happen, I think, you know, that's, that's gonna continue. And so I was very happy to see that. So along the same lines, So along the same lines, so the students that I referred to were those that have been moved over, right? So the grow opportunity goes back to our English learners. Also in the same category of testing, they continue to have lower scores, right? But the goal is to continue to look for ways to help them reclassify, right? Because once they reclassify, that's one goal or one achievement. Then from there, it looks like they'll be able to increase or we'll be, we'll be able to increase the amount of students that will meet or exceed those, those standards. So those were my two areas, the growing glow. And again, thank you very much for your time in putting this all together.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. All right, and we'll move on to goal number three. Board President Arianez.
Yes, and goal number three, it was students will graduate and be prepared for college and post-secondary opportunities. One of the things that was, I'll start with, with the need. What are our greatest areas of opportunity and how we can effectively address them? One of the things that I noticed, since we combined both, both of the high schools, there has been a lot more resources and programs at the high school, at Azusa High School. Where before it was divided, and you know, if you wanted, if you wanted to do the, is it the, what is it called? The dual enrollment with Citrus College, you had to be at Gladstone High School. If you wanted to do the, the other, the, what is it, the? Oh my gosh, B, is it BI? Thank you. You had to be at Azusa. If you wanted to do the medical, you had to, you know, and so forth. So I, I, the, the areas that I think that we, let me start with the progress, actually. That we've done is basically we, we've, we've done a great job, we in SAU, because we, we don't do it. We've done a great job in being able to go ahead and merge that, those opportunities for our students to be able to access those programs. And we also had our high school principal come and share a lot of the things that are happening in Azusa, which are amazing. So one of the things that we, so that's the progress, the need. I, I see that we can increase the graduation rate at, it's getting up there. But to increase it and to offer more opportunities like pathways and dual enrollment at our continuation school. I, I did have an opportunity to speak with two students from Sierra High School this weekend. And they're from, they're from Azusa High. And I asked them, I said, will you, will you be ready to go back to your, your high school? And what they actually said was, no, we want to graduate from Sierra. And so I asked them why, and they said, because of the fact that it's a smaller school and they did well in that environment. The parent was also sharing that with me. And so I, I think that we have great things happening at Sierra High School. And we're slowly getting there with, with your guys' hard work. But I do, in the future, you know, being able to offer more of those opportunities and at both of the high schools that we have here would probably be a need.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, next we have goal four, which I believe was Mr. Greer.
But I think he's been excused.
Okay, so we'll, we'll skip or?
I'm sorry, no, Mr. Ramos is.
He shared his feedback, but then he took his paper with him. I don't, he didn't leave it. He didn't leave it on his.
Which one was four?
No, it's a blank sheet. I, I think.
It's okay, we can, we can skip goal four.
He was close with me when I was in, and then he took it with him, so.
All right, so we'll move on to goal five. Ms. Benavides.
So goal five was, goal five is AUST will ensure safe and restorative school climates. And I want to read this from the material for context, you know. So as a community school district, safe and restorative learning climates are an expectation and essential for student success. AUST's annual survey data indicates a need to continue to create a safe and restorative learning environment. So this just gives some data. The percent of parents who reported students are safe at school vary by school levels. Seventy-one percent for elementary families, thirty-three for middle school families, and thirty-nine percent for high school families. So the reason I read that is because, just to better, to give a better understanding for those that are, might be watching. And as a school board member and as staff and teachers and cabinet and superintendent, I think that we, we're constantly ensuring that we are providing a school and safe environment for our kids. And that's, as far as I know, I think we're all on the same page. That's a priority for everyone in this room, including the parents, right, the community. So the glow that I noticed is that, yes, there's been different programs and different strategies that have been implemented by the school district. One of them is a partnership with the Western Justice Partnership, which is, which is essential because we want to be visible. We want to ensure that the community knows that we are bringing in third-party, you know, help, if anything, so that because we, we can't be in the classroom and then, you know, we only have so many people on our, you know, staff on our campuses. So we need those second or third eyes out there. So, and I think also the growth in creating community circles in our district. And one of the things about the community circles is I joined one of them at the, at, I think it was Azusa High School. And so I had that opportunity to experience, experiencing that. But one of the things that I noticed is that the, the students started doing that. And for me personally, I think I like that because it really, it creates engagement between the students and students that maybe, you know, tend to be kind of isolated and, you know, introverted. I think it's really giving them an opportunity to speak and to hear from other students that maybe are feeling the same way they're feeling. So I really think that that engagement between students is so crucial. And I think it's great that we continue to do that because we need to make sure that students know that we're not alone. There's another person just feeling the same things I'm feeling, or maybe not getting the same attention that I'm not getting, right? Whether it be home or school. So I think that's really important for me because I think that growing up in a single-parent household, I can put myself in their shoes. So that's one thing. I think that professional development is, has been a big thing. I think that, in speaking to the ladies, I think we need to continue to focus on not only, like we're doing now, the certificated employees, but the classified employees. So that students feel valued, right? Because we have to instill those values in our teachers, whether they're classified or certificated, so that they could transcend that to the student. When we feel valued, then we, that's what we give out. So that's really important to me. So I really do see that as a glow. I hope that we continue to do that. I would love to see more parent engagement, but we'll go to the girl's side after that. Thank you. Absolutely. And I wanted, I did want to say thank you to all the staff, the team, because it takes a whole team here that put this together. Last year was a little bit, it structured a little different. This was nice too, because you should have been here last year, remember Ramos? But this is good too, because it really gave us an opportunity to dig into the goals a little further and really, they really, I feel like it, it just, I got a better understanding. So thank you.
Okay, thank you so much to everyone. We appreciate your engagement, your opportunity to work with us and listen and clarify. I just, I do want to mention to everyone that this report will be available on our district website following today's meeting. So parents will be able to download the report and review the report at any time after today's meeting. Additionally, we do hold what we call community engagement meetings, where principals will be going over a slide presentation that gives an overview of the report in, in general terms for, for parents. They will be doing these engagement meetings with parents as well as certificated and classified staff. There is an accountability piece where they submit dates of these meetings to us here at the district level, just to make sure that we get the word out and, and that we encourage that engagement with our parents. We will also continue these protocols with our PAC plus and our student advisory group, also looking at these reports and this mid-year data to inform the twenty-five, twenty-six LCAP plan that will start to develop starting tomorrow.
Can I add something regarding the LCAP five?
I'm sorry?
Can I add something regarding the LCAP five?
Sure.
Regarding the AUST will ensure safe and rest, rest, restoration school climate. So I, I know that Azusa Unified, that we have so much to offer at the high school and at the middle schools and at the elementary schools. As my colleague mentioned, you know, Western Justice, Second Call, Blackwater, even our strategic badges, our community schools, sports, our CTE courses. And, but I, I really still say that we are not advertising it, you know? I also think on the youth truth survey that, why it's always saying that they don't feel safe. You know, it's parents, you know, when we have all this to offer, I, I really strongly believe that maybe they don't understand what it means, do you feel connected? Maybe they don't understand if you say, do you feel safe? What does that mean, safe when you go home or safe when I'm in school? It would be great if, when they give this survey, you know, if the students did it in class and the teacher explained to them, this is what it means, maybe we'd have a different outcome. Because we keep getting the same thing every year, saying the same thing, that they don't feel safe. I mean, how much more stuff do we need, you know, I mean, other than putting bars on the, on the schools, you know, we, we do a lot. I know that. And I know that we have a lot of outreaches and I know we have the well-being center. We have so much. I just can't see, it's just frustrating seeing the same feeling that they have and what we can do other than, we cannot reword it because it's already written. But maybe we can explain it even to the parents, even during, during the coffee with the principals. You know, back to school night or what hap, you know, we just need to explain it. What does it actually really mean? Oh, you know, I play sports, I play soccer. Well, then you are connected. You know, it's, it's just frustrating that we keep getting the same answer. And I would like, hopefully, what can we make, make it easier for them to understand, to educate them?
Great points. And it's something that we've discussed. This is data from the end of last year, right? So we're about to receive our new youth truth survey results. So hopefully, when we report at the end of the year, we'll see some growth. But I think that's key, what you mentioned, making those connections in terms of vocabulary, right? So that's what it's about. We do it, we should be doing it for our English learners. But again, when they're taking these surveys, do they understand the question? Can they make the connections to what supports are in place for connectedness or a sense of belonging? Or do I feel safe? So really explaining questions and understanding, you know, what the language is, I think is key. So definitely important for us to take back to our school sites and our site leaders and teachers.
And, and also just looking at the suspension rates, the expulsion rates, how they have different, you know, I've been here sitting on this board the longest and I've seen, we used to have, as I mentioned to Mr. Hernandez, that we used to have Mr. Mr. Creel, and he would present five or six expulsions or five or six suspensions. And the school, you know, now, I mean, you're looking, you see one. So I, I'm thinking, of course, it's not perfect, but I see a change. I've seen a difference in the numbers. But yet people are not feeling safe. So it's just something that we need to work on.
Definitely. Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our assistant superintendent, Ms. Camacho, to close this out.
So just very briefly, because we are Ed Services, we are dedicated to strengthening instructional practice. And we do want to highlight some of the instructional strategies that you experienced here, that many of our students experience in their classroom. So we started our evening by identifying a clear articulated purpose for what the learning was going to be today. We utilized a gradual release of instruction. We started with an I do, we do together, to you do independently. We provided a structured note-taking guide for you to organize a lot of the information that you were hearing from each of us. You had an opportunity to work through expert groups. And you got to speak to those who are most well-versed in some of these goals. We tied your new learning to some prior learning to add to, to your knowledge base. And you had opportunities to work in four domains of language, reading, writing, listening, and speaking, which is key for our student learning. You also got to work in small groups. And we provided differentiated resources for you to access the information. So again, thank you for participating with us tonight as we continue our commitment to engaging our educational partners and ensuring transparency in our LCAP reporting process as well as our budget. And we open it up for any further questions or comments you may have.
Board Member Benavides.
I just wanted to again say thank you for, you know, putting this together. And we didn't really get into, we, we had a station over with Latasha, who really looks at the numbers for the district. And the reason I kind of want to just highlight this a little bit, because first of all, I appreciate all your work, is because, you know, we have with this crisis that with the fires and things like that, where the state is looking at budget cuts and the governors, you know, we don't know where the funding's going, where we're going to be in a year, something that we, she, you know, she walked me through. And it, and then we have the cost of living increase and things like that. So she, we look at the revenues and I'm trying to look at my notes here and just, you know, look at what, what I heard and it's like, just for the sake of knowledge that we don't know where we're going to be fiscally in a year, a year from now, right? Because we know cuts are coming and it could impact the district, right? It's going to impact every district. And then we have our expenditures still that we have to account for. And we have to continue to do our jobs as, as a district. So it just really, I mean, it just, I, if Latasha, if you don't mind, just giving a little brief overview, really quick, just, you don't have to get as detailed as you did with me, but just so for the sake of transparency to our community, kind of where we're at. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So we talked about the COLA, where we started out the COLA projection of two point nine three percent. Now we're looking at the projected COLA being two point four three percent. Share with each board member for Azusa Unified School District, that reduction in COLA of a half a percent equates about $450,000. We were just talking about the evolving change of the fires and the other disasters that as of right now, we don't even know if that two point four three percent is going to materialize. We identified that we do have an increase in our projected PERS, where the district has to make the contribution for every dollar for our classified employee. STIRS is currently at nineteen point ten percent and that's slated to remain the same. But we have other increases. We did dive into the fact that even though the district receives a COLA, that does not equate to an increase in revenue. So even right now, just on paper, for twenty-four, twenty-five, we're projected to close out this year receiving a hundred million dollars. And with the change in COLA and due to decline enrollment, our next year projected revenue is going to go down by three point two million. So we're just showing that the parallel does not just equate to, yes, the state is giving the COLA. That means the district is getting more money because you also have to factor in decline enrollment.
Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. And one of the things that she mentioned, which was, I thought was really important, and maybe it's because I'm a PERS, you know, a former employee, but is that we initially started at four percent, right? In two thousand and eight until we're at. In two thousand and eight, until we're, we're at, you said, we are at over twenty-seven percent. So that, that's a big jump. And that, that's, that's just Azusa Unified School District. That even impacts like local municipalities, anybody that's PERS or STIRS. So, I mean, those are big numbers. And I just, for the sake of transparency, I just wanted to, you know, not shine a light on, on that. Um, because we need to be prepared as a district and, because sometimes hard decisions come down the road. So, thank you for that, Latasha.
Board Member Ramos, any last comments?
Yeah, just again, I want to thank you all for, um, putting this together. And for me being, again, the new person here, it was very informative. And I think that, that we used to do this was very, very So again, thank you. And, um, also, I got a lot of good reading material for, for, for the evenings to come. So, um, um, I am gonna dig through some of it because, uh, uh, the, all the data that, that's there is very interesting. So, um, thanks again for, to everyone for, for, for bringing this to the board.
Yeah, one, one last call. Uh, oh, go ahead.
Yes, um, I also like to thank everyone. Um, I, I like how we do this because we all have in different questions, individual questions, right? And, um, the same thing with our budget, that we met with her individually. We never did this before, and I want to do it more than once a year, because it was great information. But of course, we all had different questions on that, too. And, um, you all did a fine job on explaining each, uh, um, L cap that we have, one to five. And I want to thank you all for your time.
Thank you, colleagues, for, for your comments. And I have one, uh, well, some last comments. And to echo my colleagues in thanking you guys, this, this is, I, I remember being part of this as a parent. When we were, uh, it was the PAC plus. It was the first year, and trying to write three years out was a lot of work. So I, I, I have been part of it, and I know how much, but I'm not mainly part of it, just as a parent, you know, contributing factor to it, and it was just a lot. So I just want to thank you for your time, your dedication, your passion to making our district just become better and better. And being able to, to see kind of, uh, like what, uh, Board Member Rodriguez Pena said, that we're, it's just not a presentation. Basically, you're teaching us the way our students are learning. And we are enjoying it. We're enjoying it and we're learning. And yes, we will have to review, um, our notes. I agree with those graphs. Um, you know, it, it's very simple, but at the same time, it's, you know, it's understandable. It's not complex to understand. And so as the years go by, I appreciate the positive, uh, you know, criticism or, uh, construct, uh, constructive criticism that the board gives or parents, and you guys are adapting, you know, the L cap. And most importantly, putting our community first, which is our students, our parents, our staff. How can we support our staff? Because if we can't support our staff, then there's no student growth in any of the areas of math, you know, uh, English and so forth, our, our, our chronic absentees. How can we improve? Right? What are ways that we can improve our, our absentee, our chronic absent, absentees? Um, so these are, um, great conversations, and I'm sure we can sit here all night and talk some more. But I, I think, I think we're all, all on information overload right now. I think we're good. And we just want to thank you again for your hard work and your dedication to our district. Thank you. Now, moving on to item four point one, which is the adjournment. Can I please get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn?
We have a first We have a first by Board Member Rodriguez Pena. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second by Board Member Ramos, discussion. Now, seeing that there's none, we can go ahead and place our vote. And it passes four, one being absent. This meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-five PM with five minutes to spare. Have a great evening. Have a good night.